Good evening and welcome to the Shasbury School Board, Board of Directors meeting. And I wanna change, I'll take citizens' comments, but I just wanna change the agenda. There's gonna be no superintendent's report and I'll take public comments or citizen's comments and I wanna go right to the budget. If we can. Any citizens' comments? Hearing none? Okay. We go right to the Rick.
So, I had a packet in front of your seats, hopefully you kept it in order, I put it in there, 'cause that's how I'm gonna talk about it. The detailed budget is the first document. You'll see that you're down to a three point six percent increase and I'll show you in a minute how that happened. Largely if not solely as a result of S V S U's finalization last night. You see at the bottom, the breakdown of what's driving that increase. Special ed is a small portion of that, S V S U's. The next, when it says S V S U, that's the administration, administrative portion of the S V S U. Preschool is up one point eight and then your local stuff is one point two, that's what's driving those budgets. The next document you should have is what got you there. And they were all S U's assess- assessments with the exception of the last number. It was a small dues and fees that I had to research and I was able to reduce that five hundred and fifty dollars. A whopping five hundred and fifty bucks. So that shows you what changed from your last, when was that, Monday I guess, Monday's meeting. Any questions thus far?
And these are all, everything on this page is part of the S U assessment, okay, which-
With the exception of the very last five hundred and fifty bucks.
The dues and fees, okay, and and the S U's numbers are all approved now at the S U level, so.
Tentatively?
Tentatively.
Tentatively, okay.
Any other questions? So far? Next page you have should be your historical tax rate document that shows, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time here, 'cause the only thing you really care about is what the blended rate's gonna look like. But it shows you the statistics within the calculation formula that is driving your portion of the tax rate, your portion of the tax rate is up nine point four cents, don't get excited, that's not what the tax is increasing. That's your rate that gets blended, so, and I'll walk you through that in a second. Again, realize those state-based numbers that are highlighted. Legislature can change them at any time and can wait as late as the last day of their session walking out the door to set those rates, so there's, they try to have them, well, the original intent is to have them set the first couple of weeks in January, I've never seen that happen. They try to have them set prior to town meeting day, so people know what they're voting on. I think I've seen that maybe thirty to forty percent of the time, they usually don't get set until after town meeting day. Any questions on that document? The next document is the blended rate. I will emphasize again that Mount Anthony is materially done. There is a an agreement with the C D C that will affect their budget both from an expense standpoint and a revenue standpoint, it should have zero impact on the tax rate. But until I finish that, I just leave the asterix, that there could be a a minor change there. So, when you go down through the tax rates, you see where Shasbury's pupils are, two hundred and forty-four of them, you've got four hundred, four hundred and fifty-two equalized, I'll start at the top, you've got four hundred and fifty-two equalized pupils. Your C L A is one hundred and eight percent. Two hundred and forty-four of those equalized pupils are in your elementary system, the two hundred and eight are at the high school system. That gives you the percentage split between the two. You can go down through and see how you set your tax rate, and we've taught, walked through that a number of times. So you're setting an equalized tax rate of a buck thirty-two, Mount Anthony's setting one of a buck forty-three. Those rates get prorated based on where the population is. So you take your dollar thirty-two multiplied by the fifty-four percent of the populace, Shasbury's populations in the elementary system. So you take fifty-four percent of that dollar thirty-two rate, and the same for Mount Anthony, you do the same for Mount Anthony, you take forty-six percent of the dollar forty-three rate. You then apply the C L A and you come up with your actual prorated rates for Shasbury at sixty-six cents, for Mount Anthony at sixty-one cents. And then you add those two together and you're gonna come up with a municipal homestead tax rate of a dollar twenty-seven. Compared to last year of a dollar, or this year of a dollar twenty, you're looking at a six point eight cent increase. For those on T V, I emphasize cents as in pennies, not per cent. The last thing I've handed out is the draft warning, I encourage you to look that over carefully to make sure that I've got the right dates and who's up for elections, I think they're accurate, but I mean, as many people that can edit my material, the better from my perspective. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have, Mr. Chair, or anybody else I guess that has.
Okay. I think there's, I think there's, this says there's two people up, I think there's three.
Uh, yeah, I thought I, maybe I didn't get it in here. Yeah, there's three, articles six, seven, and eight, or three.
You're right, you're right, you're right, okay.
Oh, one here.
Yeah, that's right.
Is the, Rick, is the dollar amount in Article ten? Thirty-four, sixty-nine? Does that, should that match? Something that you've just shown us?
No, that should match. The last thing on the first detailed budget. Forty-four, sixty-nine, one eighty-three, what you're seeing on the tax rate calculation, we add in that hundred and two thousand dollars ballot article. Because you have to raise the tax, assuming that passes, you have to raise the taxes for that.
Okay, great, yep.
But that's a good clarification, that those taxes are calculated assuming both articles pass.
Just the, another question then, other than, you've mentioned the legislature hasn't set the spending, the base amount, or the base tax rate, but other than that, are the, are, unless the numbers locked in, and I guess I'm thinking of the local revenue line, is that number locked in, also locked in, or and when does it get locked in if it's not today?
It's locked in whenever you guys say yes.
So once we, once, if we vote, approve this and the voters approve this.
Well, you can't do it tonight, I mean, you can't, as soon as you can do it's the twenty-second. So they're gonna have to get back together for a five-minute meeting to warn the, to warn the annual meeting. And once you approve that, at that point, it's pretty much locked in. Now, the one thing that did, thanks for reminding me, before we're done here, you guys need to set a tax rate, or a tax rate, set a tuition amount for students who are tuitioning, and right now you have three from Shasbury, one from Sangate or Sundaland or any of them.
Four from North Platoon, one from Sangate.
Yeah, one of them's going out, right?
One's going out, it's next year, yeah.
So next, so next, we're, next year we're planning on three in one, right?
Three in one, yes.
In this revenue, I've got the ninety-three hundred dollars that is being charged this year, 'cause I wanted to be conservative on that end. Your announced tuition, based on this budget, is gonna be ten thousand five hundred.
Announced tuition, okay, so announced tuition is something else?
Announced, yeah, announced tuition, whole nother calculation that I'm required to do to the state, so anybody that wants to tuition their kids in there, they know that that's the most they'll pay, you can set the rate lower than that. But you, once, once you announce that tuition, you can't go higher, and then the state, after the year is complete, they will tell you what your actual tuition is and you have to reconcile it if it's off by more than three percent. So, the announced tuition's gonna be ten-five. And I would suggest you set a tuition rate of ten thousand dollars for Shasbury and, was it Sangate? Sangate was the other one?
And anyone else who-
And anyone else who chooses to come along.
And then if, I guess what I was really getting at was if sometime this spring, somebody else does come along and says, can you take us and we say yes?
That's free money to you and it grows your fund balance.
It grows the fund balance, okay, but at that point, the revenue number's locked in, okay.
Larry, you have anything, or? I've got some I wanna bring up.
Just a cough.
I wanna, I wanna ask Jeff a couple of questions, I'm trying to work through this thing, on the specials itself, the gym, art, music. Like we have the, the art for the example, one, once a week, fifty minutes, how come they're all, all of them aren't like that? I just asked, everybody's on the same type of schedule.
So why are-
I ask the question 'cause I don't know, that's what I'm asking you.
Philosophically, I guess you would want P E more than once a week, fifty minutes.
Okay.
Same with music, although music's only, as we talked about in the board meeting on Monday.
Twice a week, thirty minutes.
Plus she also takes care of all the lessons, chorus, and band, so it's on top of that, so music is comprehen- is pretty much comparable to art, you know, it's only ten minutes more. So, but P E especially is something you should have more than just once a week, fifty minutes.
Fran, I've got a question on-
Okay, yeah, and, okay, let's, go ahead.
I know we settled on a full-time physical ed teacher. I was curious what you slotted in for salary.
That was my next.
I always put all my T B Ds in at Master Seven with a family plan.
Okay.
Now, can we put that position, 'cause Jeff has said he'd like to keep that as a full, full-time? Can we put that in at a bachelor's, three or four, something like that, can, can we do that?
Oh, yeah, if you can do that, I mean, it's, it's gonna limit his pool to who he can hire. It's gonna limit the cash.
Got a lot of people out there. Yeah.
I'm just, I'm not saying yes or no.
I mean, no, I understand, I mean, 'cause we'll need to talk about that anyway, but, um, what else? Go ahead.
Reason, we brought it up at S V S U the other night, the Secretary of Education has recommended that we look at our hiring policies really close as to, that's an opportunity to bring people in at a lower level than we might otherwise. And so, it's, it's one of those
Right.
positions that we should have at an entry level, not a-
Yeah, it's kinda like a high school math teacher, where you wanna go find a master's sixteen, because you need that.
If you need that.
You need that skill set at that level to deliver some of those, some of those needs.
And hopefully we'll have the same history there that we had with Howard, that, you know, we bring somebody in on an entry level and they stick and they remain with us and grow as we grow, so.
Well, I, while I, I see your point, talking to a four P E teacher, and there are some skill sets that I would be looking for in a new P E teacher that-
Jeff, I understand that, and, and part of our responsibility, including yours, is to pass on the skill sets that, that you can share, so that we do end up with a, an exceptional, Shasbury's known for an exceptional physical ed program. We wanna, we wanna keep that going, but, you know, youth, enthusiasm, they, they all speak to it too, that, let's get somebody that, that's-
Yeah, I mean, what, what I'm trying to do is you've got some stuff in there you want, so I'm trying to compromise, and we gotta look at other things. 'Cause I know next year's gonna be worse, but I, and I'm, at the same time, I'm trying to look down, further down the road, so we don't find ourselves back here, and hopefully this, if we do the math interventionist and it, it'll pan out and we got the, we can see the results and stuff, that's fine.
Those are also in a, you know, that classroom teacher's also in a Master Seven family.
Right.
And I think the math, I think we put the math interventionist even higher, because again, that was, you know, that was a skill set that we kinda wanted.
Yep.
Some serious, so we might've put that in a nine or eleven or something?
Well, no, I think we put the same.
Similar numbers the other day, Monday.
Do they look similar? Maybe it's a different district I was thinking about. Those are, those two, all those T B Ds, all three of those, are in a Master Seven with a family plan.
Okay, in practice, just to this point then, if you, whenever we hire a new fill-up position that's been budgeted at, that Master Seven level with a full family plan, if you, if, if, if the principal identifies, and I'm not just thinking Shasbury, but just across, you know, the district in practice, if you, if you find somebody who actually has, you know, the masters plus fifteen, or whatever it is, and has been teaching for twenty-five years, and this is the right person. The fact that it's been budgeted at a lower level doesn't necessarily preclude us from hiring that person, we would have to authorize maybe a shift?
It's, it's, it's a more, you're correct, it doesn't say you can't hire the person. It makes it more difficult, it'll be more, it'll be a more difficult conversation of how you pay for it, either we gotta move money out of contingency, or you have to know you're gonna deficit spend, or you got, you just gotta make some conscious, educated, pardon the pun, decision. Decisions. You know, and typically, I mean, if we, if, you know, and all, all the principals I work with with new hires in this budgeting process, you know, where, why we pick Master Seven is literally the middle of the grid. And this is, you know, this may be a good example, the three people budgeted there, you know, you may have one come in masters sixteen, one come in masters five, and one come in, you know, and and so you're able to slide money there amongst those positions, do a bunch of transfer to cover those costs. If you say, which I had one district do a couple of years ago, that says, nope, and I think they had four or five of them, you budget every one of them at a bachelor's three, and you put in a single plan, and I said, I'll do it, I'm just saying, you're limiting your flexibility. And, and they did, they, they, they had a very, they, they went and hired some people above those numbers that put them into a very difficult budget situation. But, you know, moving one position, you know, if it's say the phys ed position, you know, to a bachelor's three, I don't know if I'd go with a single plan, maybe I'd say two-person, just in case. But you could go with a single plan, 'cause you have family in the other two, and I don't know, you know, you could gamble that gamble. But, yeah, that could, that could save you in the budget.
Having the, having the higher-
Fifteen, fifteen, twenty thousand bucks?
Again, but if, having, having the seven and the full family plan gives us, if we don't hire-
Gives you nearly total flexibility, but-
Yeah, plus it gives us fund balance, looking at going next year.
And we can't go backwards, right? Suppose Jeff does come up with a candidate that has the credentials, masters plus sixteen. He can't negotiate for a lower.
With a candidate?
Yeah.
No. You're, you're obligated to hire in that grid based on collective bargaining.
Wonderful, we can go higher, but we can't go lower.
Well, you can't really, you can't even go higher, I mean, you-
No, I'm saying we can go higher, we can always go higher, but we've never had the opportunity to back on.
Yeah, I guess I don't, I guess I don't understand, I mean, you, you, you get somebody that the, the collective bargaining agreement is pretty clear.
Understand that.
They have this, they have this education, this, this experience, they're plugged here. That's it, there's no, there's no negotiation, there's no, you know, there's no saying, I'll pay an extra two thousand if you come, 'cause you're great, or, you know, I know you got all the experience, but I'm not gonna pay you more than this, I mean, they just can't.
The other thing I wanna look at also is our, our schedule for maintenance. I'm, I am looking at that ballot article of a hundred and two thousand, whether we leave it on there or not. Anybody else has got anything else, that's just an example of what, I know that, I've talked with Jay and, and Jeff has told us at the meetings, yeah, that's, the roof can be repaired, and it's, it's a gamble, I, I don't know if we wanna take that gamble or not, but I just, we gotta find something that we can, worried about the fund balance, worried about where we're headed.
How about the gym floor?
The gym floor, yeah, that's, that, now, we talked about taking somebody off that hundred and two.
Right, right.
To do the gym, but we, we also, Jeff brought up the parking lot out here, not the paving, I misunderstood, they talked about the paving, but I forgot about the part, the extra parking, it's, could gain us thirty spots. And that was fifteen around here for that?
We're hoping with the new site, we're still waiting on the new site plan, but it was twelve originally, a little longer, twelve originally, so we're-
It's just something I wanna, we need to think about, because if we're gonna meet on the twenty-second.
Who's doing this?
John Junior, or the, the father?
Oh, okay. I'm suggesting we keep it in, Fran, I mean, make your adjustments, we talked about doing the roof before we do the floor.
Yeah, yeah.
But if you wanna include the, the parking lot, there's a substitute for the floor this time, let's, let's move stuff around a little bit, but-
Yeah, well, that's why I'm asking now.
Yeah, but that's a great test of the community.
The other two were here, so we could get a-
You've got it out there in plain sight.
Yeah.
Folks can look at it, understand what we're doing, and say, yep, we'll go with it, or nope, we won't. Looks like we've still got some work to do as to what elements actually show up on that.
Right. Well, you can sit down with, with Jay and Jeff also, before that meeting, and, and we can hash it out, what, what actually has to be done. You know, what can we hold off, or whatever, but-
Well, yeah, I mean-
I wanna have some leeway here somewhere.
If you can give me the, the new dates, and if you wanna put the parking lot on for whatever reason.
Right.
You know, we can recalculate that, recalibrate that, and you know, it's gonna be what it's gonna be, it's either gonna, I doubt it'll stay at one oh two, it might come down a couple bucks, it might go up a couple bucks, but, you know, you know, you, you really should, I mean, those are the projects that we're aware of, or we were aware of last year. So now, it sounds like there's a new parking lot that should be on there. So we just need what the cost is gonna be and when you wanna do it. And we can recalibrate those things, and based on, you know, the roofing analysis of, of when those roofs need to be done.
Right.
Right.
And there might be some natural shrinkage of that number.
And I think it was you, Larry-
I wouldn't, I just, I mean, I think I reiterate what Larry said, I wouldn't arbitrarily just cut a number for the sake of cut.
And you, I think it was you that brought up about the computer equipment, or was it you, Dave?
No, yeah, but I think it was also discussed that that wasn't, this wasn't the appropriate place to put it.
Right, right, oh, that's, that's right, 'cause, you know.
You have the, you have the lease and-
That's right, you're right.
And if you, if you want a technology sinking fund, you'll need to get voter approval for that. I haven't researched this, I'm just pretty confident this was probably just, when it was originally approved by the voters, it was probably for major repairs and renovations, beating the gas. But you guys would know better than I, you've been around here a lot longer than I have.
It looks like the gym floor and the parking lot would interchange pretty close, it's dollar-wise. And I really, again, I really feel the parking lot should have some priority. Especially if, if the numbers are correct as to the increase in school population, you're gonna put another
I know, that's-
Ten or twelve parents in here at certain times of the day, and it, it is somewhat chaotic out there, Jeff, you've done a great job in, in trying to smooth it out as best you can, but if you're convinced that they'll use that lot, I think it's a great investment in, in the safety of everyone that has to be exposed there in the course of the day, so.
Is he, I am in part of those conversations, but and I know generally the area you're looking at, and I don't know what flexibility, but is he, is he looking at creating a bus turnaround to separate the bus from the cars, from the walkers? And I know you've got limited space out there, but if you're gonna go to this headache, I, I think it'd be worth a couple bucks to at least research that to see if, 'cause that's ultimately what you wanna do.
Well, we've got a plan in place, right?
Yes.
We've got a plan under-
Yeah, we got a general plan under place, and, and as far as what the parking configuration would be, right now, we're on hold as far as the drainage water, and how that's gonna happen, and where that's gonna go, and what system we need for that, and John is waiting on some information from the state to finalize that.
That also lets us bring the, the paving project along at the same rate.
Yep.
That, when we go to paving, we could include, if, if paving is needed to, to do aprons or entryways or whatever, or even covering, we can pick that up at the same time. There's another town benefit to that too, that during voting and during certain firehouse functions, that parking lot will, will, in addition to serving the school well, will, will serve the town well.
All right, well, that's, that's all the extra I had, I want, I want us to look at it, somehow I'll, I'll get messages to Todd and Jen to look at that also, but, and if anybody, you guys got anything else?
Well, if we're gonna have another budget conversation, I'd rather we have it, you know, as a group.
Yeah, well, me too, I, I just-
And Rick's on a short leash, she's anxious to get out of here, so.
All right, so, I'm all, that's all I had with budget, so if you're all set.
So we're leaving the T B Ds where they are?
Right. Well, I wanna, I wanna talk about the gym position. I still want to, it's gonna be up in the air, 'cause I wanna-
When's the, when's that conversation gonna take place?
Well, we gonna, you're talking about meeting on the twenty-second to finalize this thing, or you gotta have information before that?
Well, twenty seconds is soon as you can finalize.
Okay.
But that's, my, my plan was that we're gonna get together for ten seconds, warrant it, sign it, and see you later.
Okay.
What day of the week is the twenty-second?
Tuesday, I believe.
It's a Thursday.
Oh, it's a Thursday?
That's the soonest, you can do it, you can do it then, or any day the following week.
So we have ten days.
That's your window, between twenty-second and whatever, the Friday, was that the thirtieth? Friday the thirtieth, that's your window to do it.
Okay.
But if you're, you know-
Do we need you here to have that meeting, or can this board set a meeting and talk amongst it ourselves? I, I mean, I know you're, you've got twenty-five hundred budgets to do, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know.
I'd just like to have a conversation with the other two before we-
No, that's fine, I'm just, I'm, you know.
I wonder, just before we leave this conversation, if, if we were thinking about changing the P E place on the scale, from what it is now to something with less experience?
Well, it'd have to be like, I think you gotta have a bachelor, you can't have an associate, it's, it's gotta be a bachelor.
B, B three or four is the bottom.
What's the, sort of, basically the, the, you know, the magnitude of the dollar impact that might have?
If, you know, if, if you're getting into the health insurance too, your salary is probably ten to twelve thousand dollars, depending on where you place them, you know. And the, the health insurance is, single is about seven, two persons about twelve, and the family's twenty-two. Roughly. So if you, if you were to say, and clearly this is off the top of my head, but if you were to go from the Master Seven family- The master seven family plan down to a, you know, bachelor, single, you know. You know, you could be looking between twenty and twenty-five thousand bucks.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to change that and, and s- and, uh, I mean, it gives us something.
Yeah.
Uh, you're going, you're gonna have people apply that, whether they're bachelors or they're masters, doesn't matter, you're still gonna.
I, yeah, I mean, I don't know if you wanna keep having the conversation, but I, I would be open to doing that, um, for a couple of reasons. Uh, but with the understanding that we might be asked to approve a candidate who does have more experience and we should not. You know, say, we should not be telling Jeff to, you know, not give us anybody like that if he comes up with a better candidate. In the same way that we may, we may come up with a new sixth grade teacher who's fresh out of school and. You know, in that case, we budgeted and there's, there's, there's cushion, uh, on the upside. And we wouldn't say, sorry, it has to be somebody who's been working for fifteen years, we don't wanna see a, you know, a rookie, we're not, we would never say that.
I'm certainly not belittling, belittling the position, but I think this is an opportunity to start somebody at a lower level.
And I may very well find somebody at that level, I may, I may very well find somebody at that.
Yeah.
I just, I just.
I'm sure, you, you know, you look at the graduation rate of folks that have been through that program, there's a lot of kids out there.
Oh, I know. There is, I know, and there's, there's a lot of good young PE teachers out there, I just, um. Like Dave said, I hope I'm not hogtied where I can only interview and research people that are fresh out of.
I think we've gotta start taking advantage of those opportunities when they, when they show up and they make sense and, and they're gonna support our program. We're not gonna have enough for everything.
Yeah.
So, anyway, we know that we've got the numbers for the, for this scenario.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we've asked Rick to put together another set of numbers for, uh, the twenty second, or if that's the time when we could get together, or if. We have a, we have meetings.
We're tentatively scheduled for next Monday, Martin Luther King Day, I don't mind meeting, cause I gotta work anyway, but if it's, I know some people are.
Well, I, I'm just.
Have a holiday.
You don't get that off?
Is there any way, and I'm just throwing it out now, that we could meet earlier in the day on the twenty second?
Maybe seven in the morning if you want.
Well, I'm asking these guys.
Well, I don't know what the definition early in the day, I, I believe, we get five in the morning if you want.
Three, four?
Yeah, you're gonna miss Jen, unless she's got the day off.
No, that's, okay.
You're talking the twenty second.
Yeah, I, I wanna.
He's talking the, or.
Yeah, I was talking twenty second.
Well, that's, that's a normal workday, so you're probably gonna lose.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, uh, okay.
And probably will lose Tim and Dave?
Nineteenth?
Yeah, recent, or, uh.
That, that, that's a week from Mon- that's next Monday, which is Martin Luther King Day, and I, I said, you're tentatively booked on the calendar for that.
Let's, let's shoot for that, friend.
For that.
You want the nineteenth, at what time? What's the earliest we could, I'm gonna have to check with Jen and, and Todd anyway.
Um.
And I can have Mary Lee send out all the information to Richard.
Five thirty, I could, I could make it. If you wanted to be early, yeah.
Okay, Larry, you're all set, I'm all set, okay, five thirty, so I just gotta check with nineteenth. And, uh, I'll have Mary Lee make sure she gets everything out. Hopefully that's a go. For the nineteenth, so, anybody got anything else, so we can get.
So. You, you, you want me to bring you what that would look like?
Yes.
At what, bad, right at the bottom?
Bachelor's, whatever, whatever the three or four, whatever it is.
What, what health plan?
Um.
Let's go with one, friend, I mean, that's.
You wanna go with, well, let's go with the one.
You have some flexibility, the other two are families and I, you know, I, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what the chances are both, all those people hit a family plan, but.
Let's do that. We wanna leave everything the same on this schedule?
Uh, well, it'd be nice if whoever's getting together, but you, Jeff, and Jay, or whoever.
Right.
Give me the new projects or update the projects.
Okay, all right. Yeah.
New values and when you wanna do them, like, if the gym's now gonna be.
Right, that's what I don't, that's why I need to talk with these two guys.
If the floor's now five years out.
Right.
I'll recalibrate that, you know, if the roof is now three years out, you know. I'll just recalibrate all that stuff and it'll tell us, it'll be, the number will be whatever it is.
I, I think we have to look at it.
It'll like, it'll likely be less.
But you're clear on the, the association between the roof and the floor.
Well, I, I'm the one that brought it up.
Maybe. I thought it was Sarah.
Anyways, okay.
I wouldn't be dis- I wouldn't, wouldn't be disingenuous.
I'm trying hard not to be, but we can.
I know it's difficult.
It is. Do the floor, the roof first, floor, so that he gets that scheduled, right?
Okay.
Right, but that's gonna be dictated by you, cause you said that, uh, was it Vermont Roofing?
Doxy.
Doxy, you said one of them just recently looked at them, did they give you a useful life on them?
Did, uh, Jay didn't tell me a useful life, no, they told me they're okay for this year.
Yeah, if you can get, if, if you can give them a call, if they can give you one year, two years, ten years.
Jeff, you've got a price on the parking lot, right?
Well.
Tentatively, yeah, tentatively, yeah, yeah, and the floor, the floor, the gym floor is, um, is pretty much set, I got a solid price on both of them. Except for the, except for the striping, I guess I've still got to make a concern for that.
So if you can give me that information before the end of business on Friday.
Okay.
I can have that recalibrated for Monday. For the Monday meeting.
Okay. What's tomorrow looking for you, like, uh? I, I, I can check.
Yeah, it's okay, it's okay, after we choose.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I have on that issue, anybody got anything else? I'll see you later.
So I just ask you to check over the.
Yeah.
The warning and.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be the first time I had a date wrong or something, or a time wrong, I'd get, I'd keep track of it.
Well, I pulled the other one, last year's out, so.
Keep track of everybody's meeting times and stuff, oh, can I get a motion, um. To, um, set your tuition at ten thousand dollars?
Larry's making a motion and Dave seconded it, all in favor, aye, there you go. Very good.
Is there anything else you need to be for?
No, it'll be all set.
Oh, you wanna do the consent agenda in case there's any question, yeah, you better do that.
Yeah, I better do that.
Because I gotta get this signed and take advantage.
Guess that'll be. Okay, and the consent agenda, we got the minutes for November, obviously, we don't have December, so we didn't meet in December. Any questions or changes on that? Hearing none on that, how about the warrants, we have warrant number ten eleven at fifty thousand, seven twenty-one eighty-nine. We got two thousand and seven at five twenty-five, eight oh one ninety-three, and there is one there that we got, I signed, it's warrant. Ten twelve for ninety-four thousand, eight forty-seven ninety-nine, it was on December, but we didn't meet in December, so.
Well, then you also have for this. I've got ten thirteen at forty-four, six sixty-four thirty-seven. Ten fourteen at fifty-five.
Well, I don't have those.
Five eighty-eight ninety-five.
Do you do that, though?
I don't have those, you said.
Wow.
Well, the ones you spoke were Decembers.
Were in December's packet.
Okay.
And then the, uh, other warrant is two thousand and eight for three forty-nine, nine forty-nine ninety-nine. There were six of them all together.
You got these two?
We need action.
Probably need, yeah, need some copies of those, so look at those, you have those warrants?
Did you guys get those?
Not the first ones you read off.
No, the first ones were, they were Decembers, and you didn't meet, you got it in a December packet, you didn't meet.
For the meeting that wasn't held, yeah, and then, yeah, we've got the hundred.
So you have ten, you have ten thirteen, ten fourteen, you have two thousand and eight?
Yeah, I don't have those.
You don't have those?
No, and we can take a quick look at those and.
There's the originals, so go write on them if you wanna sign. Losing ten pounds in here tonight, Richard.
Boy, it's amazing.
It's a sauna, just looking, just looking to where to throw the water.
It is getting warmer.
Yeah.
They probably can't shut the boilers off.
Yeah, that oughta be on your capital plan.
Right.
Off switch for the boilers.
This one's Sarah Case's here, we can delete that.
Jeff, what was the water damage, is that just a leak and, or was that?
That was that, that was.
Or was it right for?
Flashing?
Was flashing, okay.
Were the, they repaired the flashing or not?
No, that, I believe that was for.
Oh, the inside tile, oh, okay, remember you sending me.
Yeah, that was, um, a little valve, there was a little air valve that had a.
Yeah, you sent me pictures of that.
A little air valve, I mentioned it a couple months ago, little air valve, got stuck in, water leaked out and.
Yeah.
We're almost there.
All right.
Okay.
I moved, uh, we passed the consent agenda.
Okay, Larry, you got seconded, good, thank you, all in favor, aye.
So there's four of those puppies floating out here.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Right.
Two for the last.
Some got signed, some didn't.
Do you need all of them signed, or just one of each set?
Yeah, no. One's for the treasurer and one's for my office.
Here's these two.
Oops. Stole from.
Is there one more, I signed that, two, okay, good, okay.
Nope, we got. I think all three of you are on all three and all four of them.
Good, okay, very good, thank you, well, we didn't check.
So you need me for, right?
Yeah, we're gone.
Another party.
Thank you.
And so, we are, we are just, I'm sorry, just so my notes are correct.
Yeah.
We're meeting the nineteenth at five thirty, next, next Monday at five thirty.
Yes. Unless something changes, but we also gotta, we gotta do this budget transfer, so. We need to do that, should that have been done with the, uh, consent agenda or not?
Separated.
Okay.
Totally separated, what's that, what's that for?
Just for the, um, transportation to field trips.
Field service, yeah, so I need a motion to, uh, approve that budget transfer request.
You gonna have a discussion?
We, we can, yeah, I need a motion to second it.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Yeah, okay, discussion.
What is it, I, I understand what the star.
So this was, um, per conversation we had with, uh, Mr. Coggins brought up, I think it was June of last year, the fifth grade goes to Starbase every year, it's a, it's a, um, program in Rutland. Um, the cost for transportation is quite extensive, as you can see, originally, um, it was estimated to be about thirty-five hundred dollars, we got a more, uh, accurate price from before this year. That it was five thousand, during that conversation we had in June, Rick had mentioned there was some money in transportation this year that we could transfer over into this field trip line. So that we could fund this trip for them.
How many trips involved, Jen?
Six weeks, so it's, uh, six trips, two fifth grade classrooms, yeah.
And how many kids? Fifth, fifth grade, right?
All fifth grade, so we're looking at, um, fifty-seven, fifty-eight kids, something like that.
Did the cost go up because we had more kids in fifth grade?
No, it's the bus.
Just the buses and more.
Yeah.
And in the past, um, has there been, uh, parents driving or fundraising to?
So, in the, in the past, um, I think my, the year before I was here, the Rotary Club donated money.
Yeah, I think that was fundraised, somebody fundraised.
Um, well, Rotary Club funded it for a number of years, um, last year they did their own fundraising for, um, those classes, and the class itself did their own fundraising for, um. Tim brought it to the board's attention last June, we had a discussion around whether we wanted to fund it as a local.
Mm-hmm.
Those money in the transportation.
I'm surprised, so, just, there's six individual days at a total cost of five thousand dollars, so, is it?
Part of, part of the cost is the bus drivers to sit up there.
Sit, sitting for a day, it's not just driving up, but.
Leaving and coming back, cause it, so, they make.
How long are the, how long are the sixth, are the fifth graders in?
All day.
The only thing I, uh, it's a fair amount of money and a limited amount of kids get, get the advantage of it. And I know, I assume David still has his concerns about our science. Status with regard to kneecap scores and whatever, I'm just wondering i- is there a possibility of investing that same amount of money? Into an in-house program here that would benefit and, and start to, something we could start to build on as far as, uh, our science program. Tim, you, you're a, you were a promoter of this last year, right?
Yeah, I was, I, I came to the board originally because with the fifth grade had started down the fundraising path to try and get there, thinking that we needed. Thirty-five hundred dollars and we had our first fundraiser at McDonald's and raised five hundred and we're looking at each other and thinking we've gotta do this seven more times, and now we realize that we would have done it seven times and not been able for anybody to go because the price went up. Um, my, by all accounts, this is a great program, the kids love it, uh, they've been doing it for years, uh. I, I urge you to do it, I, uh, I, I don't think, you know, out of a three million dollar budget, uh, five thousand dollars is, is a lot, and it's one of the few things that I think, uh, that we can do for the. For the, the students with, you know, extra potential, um, we're talking about, you know, uh, hiring another teacher for the special ed kids, uh. So, you know, we can work harder with the special ed kids, but, you know, what are we doing for the kids that, that get it on the first try, you know, this is something that, uh, kids that get it on the first try are more likely to wanna go and do, cause it's a accelerated, uh, STEM kind of program. I think it's, uh, something that, that, to me, it's an easy choice, it's, uh, it's like the only thing we're doing.
Well, as dollars tighten up, Tim, you know, it's, it's, it's still a fair amount of money, and that's, that's why I asked the question, does it have value? Is there a perception it has value, and a, and a real experience that says, yes, it does, and you voiced that, I, I.
Yeah, it has enough value that the parents were willing to, to try at least, uh, to, you know, have seven fundraisers at McDonald's over the course of the year to try to get their kids there.
Well, that's the other thing that's changed too, if it's come from being somewhat self-funded to now it's a every-year add-on, and we have to look at it a little differently.
The, the, is there a, sorry.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm content with Tim's input, uh, I, I agree that, uh, it has merit, that's.
I, I, I would just, uh, well, first of all, does the program itself cost or something, this is a transportation line, so. We don't have to pay anything, it's the goodness of somebody's, the name, the army's heart or.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how they're funded, um, but the school's mostly from Rutland. You know, attended pretty much weekly, um, we're, we're the few schools I think that actually come from this area, if not the only school from this area. And again, it started years before I was here, I don't know how long it's been going on.
Yeah, Marilyn Carey s- uh, started it, uh.
Who's that?
Uh, Mrs. Carey.
Marilyn, yeah.
For years.
Yeah.
Marilyn, I'm sorry. And, uh, you know, it's something that's always been on the table, but it generally.
They used to come here, they used to come here though, for all of the trips, and they took one trip to Rutland, so it wasn't a six-day. Bus trip that made it more expensive, because they came here, now the things that they do, they're using more of what's at the Armory and other, I think, so that's, they can't bring it here, in fact. Bring it to them. They do like flight simulation, flight simulation. They do like flight simulation, flight simulation.
Rockets, they set off rockets, they build and set off their own rockets, they learn about rockets, thanks.
Okay.
Call the question.
Alright, I'm calling it now. All in favor of the uh motion, okay?
Alright, thank you very much.
See you, Rick, thanks. But keep in mind, as we do the budgets, it's things like that that we may come down to picking and choosing, what do you wanna do? It, I know it's only five, and I'm all for it, it's only five thousand, might be ten next year. So we're gonna have to start looking at things, it's the only reason I bring that up cuz I've been there and done it before and we've had other programs years ago that were only gonna be three hundred dollars for the sake of argument. And it turned out was gonna be eight thousand dollars, I said, we couldn't do it. And so I don't wanna start something and then have to discontinue, that's all I'm saying.
I I I completely agree that it's fair to look at a question like this and ask those questions.
Right, yeah, I mean it.
It still strikes me as an awful lot of money to get fifty kids through Harlem because it is to Rutland.
No, I agree with that, I agree, but we're kinda behind that, between a rock and a hard place right now, so I I think it's a good thing that we did.
But may I, I also just wanna say, I very much sympathize with um Tim's uh point that having seven fundraisers at McDonald's just seems like a dreary prospect, that.
It is.
Yeah.
And listen, this is a guy that wears a blue tutu. You know, if he put that on and walk around the school a few times, we'd have all the money we need.
Okay, moving right along.
I understand what I am, you're just arguing over the prices, that's the job.
Okay, kindergarten screening days.
Can I catch you, Jeff?
Yes, it is. So I have a thing here from the kindergarten teacher. So every spring, we screen all our preschool children coming in for next year. Go through dial testing, we do all kinds of stuff, hearing, um eyesight, um plus some academic and um cognitive testing, everything. Um it's a, it's a two-day process. And what's been happening in the past is we get subs for our kindergarten teachers cuz they're part of the process. We get subs sometimes for our special ed teachers cuz they're part of the process, um our nurse also. Uh we have to uh close off usually the resource room on this lower end, so we have a place to do it. And um we work the kids through throughout the two days. Um the kindergarten teachers think it would be more beneficial if we could just ask our kindergartners not to come for two days in May and use our classrooms, which the kids will be in next year, so they'll get a chance to see their classrooms and uh get it done in those two days. So reduced amount of sub coverage, um the rooms will be more available with the two classrooms. Um reducing the number of days by two still allows for um enough enough of the days that's directed by the state for kindergarten. Um and other schools do the similar format as far as just not having their kindergartners come for a couple of days. So we would obviously give parents plenty of notice ahead of time, letting them know is the reason. Um I think it'd just be a little more efficient way of doing it.
Is something that needs action?
Um yeah, cuz we have to tell, we have to.
Make the motion, we approve the process Jeff has outlined here.
For the pre-screening, kindergarten pre-screening.
Uh I'll second it, but just wanted to ask whether you anticipate any uh pushback from parents who have trouble funding.
I I think if we give them enough notice, which this is, obviously this is looking at May, I think we give them enough notice, I think we'll be okay. I really do. Um just give them short notice that they tend to get a little puppy. And they went through this process last year, these very parents went through this process last year and they saw how it worked last year, so they're probably better empathetic understanding of that.
So we need a motion and a second, did we already do?
Yeah.
You got it, okay. Alright, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you again.
Okay, consent agenda, we did, okay, policies. Uh we have policy number fifty-thirty, it's for attendance, this one is for adoption at this point. Are any changes or comments anybody wants to make on both, on that particular policy?
We warned this in March of two thousand and twelve.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'll tell you, it's been.
That was my first school board meeting, three years ago.
See, what I tell you about having so long to get these things through the system.
It looks like Woodford was holding out, uh is there something here that Woodford didn't object to or did it fall between the cracks?
I I I think, I remember this being talked about probably six months ago, okay, cuz it was on the um MAU and and Leon, of course, I I don't know if Todd made it to the um policy meeting.
Todd has not made the policy meeting.
Okay, alright, so um maybe, well, we can ask him, cuz I know there's another meeting and I don't have the date. Um I mean, we can table this if we want, I think it's kinda pretty clear and I I think.
They'll slow it up a little more, yeah.
Well, I I know, and that's my point. Um so there's some policies that took five years to get through, I mean, that's why I got off the policy committee, I mean, I, we we didn't move anywhere. So anyway, um if you have questions about it, uh Dave, I I can, I'll go back, but if you think you don't wanna adopt it, but.
No, I'm I'm okay, I'm just curious to know um more about the the history of it.
Well, sometimes there was a word, it could be may or should or if, and everybody, every time it got to a certain board, well, we'll we'll send it back to the policy committee.
Yeah.
And then it sat there because they had other policies that had to, were more important to put on the the table, so.
I I guess, you know, this, the policy, the wording of the policy, um this is a short policy.
Yeah.
It says, it was the policy of the of the districts to encourage attendance for the full number of days and then perfect attendance will be recognized annually at each school. Um I suppose there might be another slide to the argument saying, if your if your child is sick, we really would prefer that he not come to school uh on that day.
Especially now with flu.
And and sorry, we we're not gonna give you an award if you missed that, but uh I don't know whether that's been part of the discussion or not. I don't remember talking about this three years ago, but I'm I'm fine with it.
Okay, alright. Uh so, did we, I don't, can't even remember if I got a motion or second, so. Larry, you motioned it and.
This is on this one.
On this one, but we'll take them separately, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, and Dave seconded it, so all in favor of that policy to adoption, aye, okay. Alright, next one is policy fifty-eighty-five, it's search and seizure, this is for warning. Now, at the MAU meeting this week, um Lori Mulhern, a parent, had asked the question and I don't know uh Leon was there and I don't know if this was talked about in length enough, but are the people, um do they know how to pat somebody down in in this and I'm sure that's going to be, I mean, we can warn this, but there's gonna be, I suggest we make it to those, that policy meeting on this issue. Are they qualified, number one, to, how do you do it, you know, are they trained in that? So that's gonna be an issue, I'm sure, on this policy.
Well, I really wish, uh I'm again more than happy to attend the policy meetings when I know it's needed.
And this one definitely is.
Right, this this is, I have a lot of problem with this one, I wish anybody that's interested would look into it, uh see if they're comfortable with it. I certainly wouldn't be comfortable with it applying to my child.
No.
Um if a policy needs to be uh adopted to address this issue, I would suggest we use the one from the School Board Association, which we know has been tested.
By the state, yeah.
And by the state, it's it's used throughout the state and and it should have been looked at and passed all of the, through all the criteria that may be legally necessary to have a policy like this. But this this has been tweaked and modified by our own committees and I'm not.
Yeah, I I think what I think what I wanna do, um I'll I'll get ahold of Mary Lee. I wanna make sure everybody gets emailed when the date's gonna be, the policy meeting. Uh I can go, if you, if Dave wants to, I definitely, I'll go. But um I think that's an important one to voice our concerns on. So if anybody wants to go to that, they, you know, I'll make sure you get emailed on.
Well, at the very least, uh look at the one from the School Board Association
Right.
and look at the differences between the two policies and see if if this really uh, you know, satisfies issues that may have been left open on the other one.
Yeah.
Or whether it opens up uh the door for.
Okay, can we warn this for tonight? Uh if so, I need a motion and a second, and this is only gonna be for warning. When it comes to the the point where for adoption, we don't have to adopt it.
Yeah, I'll move to warn it.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Second, Larry. I I hear what you're saying.
Hmm.
But we'll go to that, we can go to that policy meeting.
No, if we warn it, that there's an opportunity for it to slip through.
Uh no, no, it it'll come here and it's not gonna go anywhere if we we vote it down.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Alright, so there's a second, so all in favor to warn?
That's your assurance.
Yes, reluctantly.
Reluctantly, yes.
I didn't hear an aye, okay.
With your assurance.
Yes, right.
Oh, thank you, alright. Next one is policy sixty-three-fifty, it's grade advancement, retention, promotion and acceleration of students. This is for adoption. Anything on that?
Just a question to Jeff, if he's comfortable with it, thinks it fits.
Yes.
What's that?
Big motion.
Okay, Dave seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Okay, facilities.
Uh just one thing, the generator's up and all hooked up and completed.
Alright. It only took two years, three, almost.
Are you sure?
Have you heard it run? Just checking.
Has anybody in this room heard it run?
To be honest with you, we we had a, we had antifreeze leak last week, so we had that, we had to get that fixed, um. But the generator's always ran.
No, I know.
It runs once a month.
I know.
But um the electricity is hooked up to the building.
So it's all set now and so if something happens, it's.
Yeah.
It's uh, perfect, okay?
Since we have a representative from the select board here, can we just ask, clarify the the cost, the final expense to us?
Um I haven't seen the final numbers, but I I'm expecting it to be uh close to what we estimated, which was half of thirteen.
Not a penny more?
Hmm.
Not a penny more?
Not a penny more, alright.
Lots of good news, alright.
I think Dave was waiting for the final bills, wasn't he, um Tim? I know he wanted to to present our portion of it, so that it could be warned and and uh put on a warrant.
Yeah.
He mentioned that he wanted to make sure he had everything, so it would be a one, wouldn't be back and forth for.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, it just got done, right?
Yeah, it did, uh last week, I think it was the final installation.
Yeah, put that in my annual report.
Okay.
I was looking for stuff, I thank you. Gee, okay, uh next up, still the principal, MTSS PD grant update?
Before we get to that, I um I wish she was here tonight, but Megan's not here, but I wanna say uh thank you to Megan Donkers for being our uh after-school coordinator for, I think it was, two and a half years, she stepped down in December. Let's pursue other, to pursue other things, but she's done a wonderful job, she's taken it in new places. We've uh, one one major thing that she's changed is that our students now leave the building and go to like to the V, from our art exchange or the tennis bubble, um in other places for after-school programming, which um never happened before, so that's one big step that she was able to do. She's leaving it in very good hands.
That was my next question.
Linda Poole, um another parent from the school, um I've worked with Linda in the PTO um ever since last year, um she'll do a wonderful job. She will, she's left it in good hands, I'm excited to have Linda on board with that. Um but I do wanna thank Megan for all the hard work that she's done last two and a half years.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
She's done a phenomenal job and she's passing all that information on to Linda, so I don't expect to miss miss a beat in that program.
Jeff, uh with Linda, is that again the same status as uh Megan had it, it's an independent um?
Still an independent board, yes.
It's still an independent.
Yes, it still is, as I right now, yes.
Good, okay.
Um as I mentioned before, if you recall, this Shasbury signed on with the state for the um MTSS, which is multi-tiered system supports PD grant, professional development grant. We met with uh Jan Wiley, the school leadership team and myself, last Wednesday, I believe it was. We spent the morning with her where she did an MTSS assessment as far as where we are at with multi-tiered systems right now at Shasbury under a number of the five different areas in MTSS. And what we're gonna do with that now is, well, first, we're gonna look at using data, um effectively the school and then she's gonna take all that information as far as where we are in MTSS and she's gonna help us find professional development opportunities for the staff to help improve that system. Um all free of charge, it's part of the, part of the, part of the grant. Um it was a great meeting, we uh we learned a lot about where we're at. She she sent us the report already from that meeting, it said, considering where Vermont is, MTSS, uh cuz we're very young in that process, she says you guys are in very good shape. Um you know, we definitely have some things to work on, things to tweak and improve on, but she says you guys are in pretty good shape, so that's that's encouraging. Uh we'll meet again with her next month to look at data analysis and then again, we'll uh look at it to figure out what PD we may need in the future. Um and that's gonna be, again, revolved around mathematics at this time, because that was our original identification area. Questions on that? Uh Hour of Code, back on December eighth to the twelfth, there's a, this has been going on for for a few years now, but it was the first year we've done it. Um there's a nice national um push to get children to learn about computer science, encoding computers. And there's an organization led by uh Zuckerberg, which I believe is the Facebook creator. And he's created, yeah, he's created these um really cool coding games that students can get on and play these and learn how computers code and how do you uh make things work in a computer. Tim came to a fifth grade class and actually found a way to make a human computer. Um I'm not even trying to explain it to him, but it was pretty neat to see in 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 the process, using the kids in the classroom as a computer piece and moving things around and figuring out things go, but it was very successful. I think almost everyone in the school found an hour throughout the week to do the Hour of Code. And it was millions and millions and millions of children throughout the country that that did it. And um and something we'll definitely do next year, with the Chromebooks, it made it that much more easier for us to do it. Grades three through six could just hop on anytime they wanted, pull up the website, the kids could, it wasn't even logging on, you start playing the coding games and you and you go from there. Um bef, last year, we couldn't have done this. We would have been, we would have been in a struggle to find the time to fix the computer lab for all of our students to be able to experience this. So um kudos to you guys for using Chromebooks and allowing us to do that.
Can I make a comment about that?
Absolutely, Tim.
A couple of things, uh in our fifth grade class, we uh did a, what we called kid-powered computer. And uh the the computer algorithm they were uh doing was called a bubble sort, where it's one way that a computer can sort things by going through a list. If you find things out of order, you switch them and you keep going through the list and then every time you find something out of order, you switch them until you go through the list and you'll switch anything and then everything's sorted. And so we did that with kids by height. And uh so they were running around the room and we had kids with the pointers to the place in the list and other kids with pointers to the place in the code. Um this was an idea that I'd had since I'd first learned about bubble sort and I thought it would be a cute thing for kids to do. But uh after we did that, a couple of days ago, I was looking uh on a new tech, new site that I read and uh we were not the only ones that thought that a bubble sort would be a
Oh, yeah?
good thing to do on uh Hour of Code day. Uh dozens of uh uh people around the country did these, this bubble sort with people and uh put it to music and put it on uh YouTube. And there were all kinds of uh of uh bubble sort YouTube videos of kids, you know, running around and flipping to music, so.
Yes.
I thought that was uh, that was pretty interesting. Uh the other thing I wanted to say, this is just kinda personal, but uh the 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 kids did a lot of stuff, not just what what I, we did when I went in there, but they did a lot of stuff from the Hour of Code website and uh a lot of them got introduced to this um graphical programming language from MIT called Scratch, where kids can actually program with little icons. You know, you want to, you know, to do something at this point in the program, you just slide a little box over and it does that and then it makes little videos and stuff like that. Uh my daughter and several of her classmates uh in the in the class, in the fifth grade class where they got introduced to this are all over it now and they're doing it uh together, they're making their own little projects, they're forming uh groups uh like coding groups where they uh they work on things together and exchange uh uh information back and forth with other kids and, you know, talk about each other's projects, so it it was really a cool thing and it really grabbed hold to uh to a handful, a big handful of kids in the fifth grade.
Alright, that's good.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Tim.
Uh, so next up is, um, the school climate culture survey that the school leadership team and myself put out to, uh, let's see, we put out to staff, students, parents, community members, um, all stakeholders within the school. And this is just a summary of the results and, uh, some of the information we gathered from it. Overall, well, a little, little, uh, description first. Um, like I said, parents, students, staff, community members, I believe I sent every one of you an email with the link to the, to the survey. Um, basically looking at this culture and climate here at Shasberry and what people's perceptions are, because perceptions are important, obviously. And, uh, we had two hundred and fifty-three, um, sent out via email. Uh, one hundred and nine responded. Between October twenty-seventh and November twenty-fourth, so roughly a month, we had a hundred and nine respondents, um, which is about forty-three percent, which is pretty good for a survey. Um, if you see from the first graph, you can see a number, or the largest number was, was parents that responded, which is about forty-five percent. Um, just a footnote on the students, we only did students in four, five, and six for the survey. And then there's just a list of questions there that we asked, um, the respondents to either strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, or some gave no answer at all on some of the questions. And I'll let you look through that, but overall, what I think you'll see, the picture being, um, we're looked on very, in a very positive light here at Shasberry from, from, um, all our stakeholders.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, uh, it was not surprising, but nice to see. You know, I, I, I talk with parents quite often. I talk with, um, community members quite often and I, and I, I kinda felt this was gonna be the response, but it's still nice to see and hear. Um, they think the teachers are dedicated, approachable, knowledgeable, compassionate. Um, they like the after-school program, which I just mentioned, which I hope it knows to be. The specials is looked on very highly. The music, art, library, computer, phys ed, looked on very fondly. Uh, a number of, if you look at the back, you'll see there was two questions that we asked, open-ended, which is what works, so three questions, sorry, what works well at Shasberry, what are some challenges? And then any other thoughts you wanted to give us. And so there's a lot of comments there. Uh, sorry, the print's so small, but I tried to keep the paperwork down to a minimum. But one word came out, almost, no, how's it, um, community. It was a community school. They felt like a community. They walked in here, they felt like they're part of a community, walked in here. They, um, it was, it was said quite a bit, which was nice to see, which is what we strive for here, is be a community school. Um, ninety-two percent agreed that we, um, we s, we reflect on a true sense of community here at Shasberry, which is a very high percentage. Um, a majority felt that they were respected by the staff and the staff was willing to listen to them. That was eighty-nine percent agreed or strongly agreed. Over eighty percent felt discipline was handled fairly, communicated clearly, and dealt with effectively. And the bullying was, was an interesting topic, 'cause it was mentioned, um, in both as areas in need of work and as areas that's addressed with and dealt with and, and pretty evenly too, pretty evenly. Um, which we addressed here at school this year. We had a, uh, Steve Breakstone come last month and did a bullying for parents, um, probably prevention for parents here, a seminar, with, um, I think we had fifty, roughly fifty attendance between students, parents, and some staff members. And he basically gave a definition of bullying, what to look for, how to help prevent it, how to help children, how to help your child, um, prevent bullying or get away from bullying. It was, it was very, uh, informative. I've worked with Steve a number of times when I was at Molly Stark. He's a good guy. He knows his stuff when it comes to bullying and I think he, uh, was very helpful to the parents over there.
Who's that, uh, Jeff, I'm sorry?
Steve Breakstone.
Okay.
From Pay, Projects and Violence Counters.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I would, uh, endorse what, what Jeff's saying about that, that workshop. It was really good. Uh, my wife and I went home that night and talked about it a good bit and, you know, just kinda worked through, you know, scenarios that might have happened. We haven't really had any problems yet. And, uh, thinking back, everything that we came up with had, he had covered in, in that session.
Yeah.
Really, really fast, but really practical, uh, common sense and, uh, covered a lot of, a lot of ground on the subject.
Um, one of the things that I, I really wanted him to do was, was really clarify for, for parents what bullying is. And, um, I, as, I, as administrator of the school, take bullying very seriously. Um, I, if I think there's bullying happening, I investigate. I look into every possible, um, situation and, and go from there. It's, does not happen from my perspective very often, if at all here, 'cause bullying's very specific. And, uh, and I don't think parents always know how specific bullying is. It's not just you got a little tiff with your friend at, at, um, recess and he called you a name, he's bullying you. There's a little more to it than that. Um, and I do take it very seriously, so does the staff. And when I hear about it, um, I investigate and take care of it as quickly as possible and make sure that, yes, Larry.
Jeff, was there any, um, cross-checking with the present policies that we have with bullying? We put a lot of, the policy committee has done a ton of work on bullying. And I was just curious if, if there's any, is there, are there voids and vacancies in our policies? Or are policies adequate or are they burdensome?
In terms of, in terms of the parents' perception or in terms of?
Well, as in, in your terms, number one, I mean, it falls to you for the addressing of any situation that comes up. So I'm just curious if you, if you're, if we've given you the tools you need.
Yeah, the, the tools are there.
Okay.
I think bullying's a buzz, is a buzzword right now within the whole country. About the whole world. And, and parents are very quick to say, Mr. Johnson, I need to talk to you. My son's being, or my daughter's being bullied at school. And I say, well, let's talk about this first. Let's find out what's going on. And it's just, if it is bullying, I'll look into it. If it isn't, I'll still look into it, but let's clarify what bullying is and what it isn't, so we're not confusing that. And he did a nice job of, um, defining that for everyone. And then giving them tools, saying, okay, if you are being bullied, here's what you can do. And here's what you can do as a parent. Here's a conversation that you can have with your son and daughter if your, if your child's being bullied.
You're talking about procedure or something that, like, bullying, okay?
Again, if it occurs, it's a set.
Yeah, yeah.
Procedure to take care of it or to address it.
Yep.
I was just curious if, if that's adequate, if that's working or, or hopefully maybe that.
I would say yes, because we have very little, if any.
Right, right.
Yeah, 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 it is very straightforward, what I need to do if I, if I suspect bullying, yeah. Um, the other thing that was mentioned quite a bit, uh, as a, a need for improvement is support for academically advanced students, which is something the, um, school leadership team and I are looking at as far as how we can help those students. Like Tim said, they're getting it the first time and then they can go above and beyond and give a little, do a little extra. And trying to find ways to, um, to challenge those students as well. So that's, um, an area that we will look at and see how we can address. And I'm, I'm confident we can do that. Um, we started some things this year, but I think there's more we can do. With a little more, um, tweaking and looking at our schedule and stuff. So if you wanna, if you, I know you haven't had a lot of time to look at this. If you wanna talk about it more next, next month, we can. Um, there is a lot of it written there. I know what, what people wrote, um.
I gotta redefine print.
I know, I know, you're gonna need your glasses for that. Again, I apologize, because it was.
I've got glasses, I've got them right.
Yeah, maybe Tim will lend you his. Jeff, uh, how can people come into possession of this?
How can people? I'll, I'll put it on the website.
It's on the website.
I don't know if it's on, yeah, I, I think I plan on putting it on. I think I wanted to give it to the board first and then, um, and then I can put it on the website, yeah. It's just a document.
Just to, something to consider, uh, because it is a topic, uh, anytime that they are present, they being realtors, this might be a nice, uh, tool to put in realtor's office when they're looking at Shasberry properties. That's the number one thing that, that they come in the door saying.
Schools.
Your schools are, are a big magnet for folks that are moving here. And, uh, it, it's true. And so anything we can do to, to enhance that or to encourage that. And, and these are the kinds of things that realtors look for to, to help them do their job. But that, I think that's exceptional that, that we developed that and let's make it, let's put it to work.
Good idea.
Good, that's all I have.
All set?
Yep, thank you.
And I'm gonna forfeit my report. And next meeting is Wednesday, February eleventh, the regular board meeting. I know we're meeting on the nineteenth at five-thirty here. Hopefully I'll have the other two here. I think it's important to have a full board. We'll talk about that budget. Other than that, anybody got anything else?
I just wanted to clarify, when we were talking earlier.
Yes.
About the Star, Starbase program and, uh, Tim, a member of the audience, uh, alluded to, I, I think the math intervention is positioned that we've added to the budget, uh, as being a special ed position. And it's not. So just to make sure there isn't any confusion there, it's, it's.
It's not?
It's not, and, uh, it's, I mean, you can speak to it, Jeff, uh, but.
It's actually, it's for those students that are kind of in the middle. It's the students, between the students that are special ed and the students that get it the first time. So it's those students that are not special ed, but they might need a little extra help in mathematics.
Well, it's a drag, it's part of the three-tiered system, right?
It is part of the three-tiered system, but it's not special, it's not a special ed position. It's not for special ed students.
Not per se, Jeff, but it was mentioned that they would be participating in it.
Yes.
And that there was an element within that that was designed to address them.
Yes, but.
So it's not a, it's, it is an ina- integrated program for special ed. I mean, it, it's part of the special ed approach.
I would not say that. I'd say all students have access to it. So that means special ed's very specific. You have to be on a plan to get special ed. Students that receive services from a special, from a, um, math interventionist would not, would not necessarily need a plan. Especially IEP plan. So it's, to say it's a special ed position.
I think it was Sarah that mentioned at the meeting where it was first, uh, discussed that it had some special ed elements.
Implications for specialization that students that are at risk, if they're getting an intervention, they likely will not fall into the realm of specialization if they can get early intervention. This is an intervention for s- students that are in that at-risk, not yet eligible for specialization, but not getting the, the first instruction that's done in the classroom.
I, I, my, I guess my point was just that in terms of budgeting, it's, it's not in that line. It's not strictly for people who have an IEP. It's also not a gifted and talented program, but it's, it's broad-based and anybody who needs that sort of, uh, help early on would be, would be eligible.
I think that's part of the concern, Dave. I mean, I, when you first asked the question, I thought you were saying it had no relation to special ed at all. I feel it does. I feel it's, it's, it's a, a tool that's being also used in that, that arena. But again, it doesn't address the entire school population either. Gifted and talented is again on the other side of the scale. And this one definitely applies to the other side. So I think it's, it's always that problem. We've, we've got to fairly address both sides of that, that scale. And I think this is one more example of how, um, this particular group gets attention, needed attention, but what do we offset it with? I think that's our challenge.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess maybe I would say, it seems to me that there aren't just two groups. It's not, you know, A or B. There are some students who have an IEP and they are definitely in a group. And this position is not, as, as I understand it anyway, not targeted at that group of students.
Correct.
Uh, m- m- maybe nor is it targeted at the other non-special ed students. Or, or maybe it is only for that group of students, but it sounded to me like it was broad-based for people who needed extra help in math. Which, which, again, it would, would not be the students who would be at the, you know, at the, at the top of the scale academically, by definition, but, yeah. So I, I mean, I see your point.
I, I think that goes back to my concerns at the meeting where we first discussed this. It's, I'm confused by it, because I don't think it's clearly out, it clearly outlines, uh, what we're gonna do with it. Again, it, it, it doesn't really target, um, or show me the targets, okay? Maybe it does target it. I just don't, I just don't see it yet, okay? And again, I'm reluctant to spend that kind of money on something that, that Jeff cannot point to and say, I'm gonna get predictable results through the application of this program to this group. Maybe I'm being too specific, but I know where we've gotten before, where we haven't been. And we've just broadly, uh, spread a, a lot of money over something and hope for good results. And, and Dave, I'm going back to, to our science position too. Uh, here we are, we're, we're, yes, there's a need here, but boy, our science, if, unless Jeff's had a miracle turnaround here with the, the kneecap scores, our science, uh, um, results are somewhat lacking. So, not asking for settlement tonight, just discussion of where we're headed.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Need a motion to adjourn? Okay, second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You're now adjourned. Thank you.